We on the air? All righty. Madam Clerk, are you ready to go?
Yes.
All right.
I see Barbara's name.
Not really.
And I don't know that I had that. I didn't see a Jennifer this. There was a Jennifer this.
Yeah, that was one of them.
You guys just didn't pull it up.
It was in, in the stack that we got.
Here we go.
What we looking for?
We've cut too many trees on the path and we're saying we brought this paperwork.
Save the tree.
I don't.
Anyone?
Thank you.
Put notes on it.
Yeah, I got, I got some scratch paper.
Boy, that is not the end. Yeah. I don't think they're trying to hide it.
Uh, you, no, the, the attendants really didn't have any.
Yeah, but I'm, when I'm setting a.
We don't have a lot of.
Certainly don't want. Today I have a guy.
You just shut a single copy. Take one copy.
He said, this is scary.
No, no, there's stacks.
Oh, I'm sorry. Give them a second copy. My bad.
I gave me a inch ago for portable. Air condition works better than the regular. But. He said to me, I'm surprised he said, he must be.
All righty. We're gonna call to order the Board of Commissioners work session this afternoon. It's around four o'clock. And I'm gonna have a roll call. Mr. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Burdette.
Here.
Mr. Forbes.
Here.
Mr. Deloche.
Here.
Mr. Loper.
Here.
Mr. Kiefer.
Here.
The ones in attendance. We'll probably just have the invocation and the pageant allegiance at the next meeting. And we'll move right into safe time for our meeting tonight. This is a joint session with the planning board to discuss zoning uses and requirements for property, particularly looking at some rental, things that are coming up and some buffer information. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to our staff to kind of direct and guide us as we review these things today.
Uh, thank you. What we really wanted to concentrate today on is two issues. One of them is just a follow-up on the rental issue since this was really the basis for the moratorium. We wanted to keep this ball moving forward. Uh, and then we have actually, uh, staff met and kind of discussed this, came up with pros and cons for different approaches to look at the issue. Uh, and we're gonna present those to you tonight, just so, uh, just so you all can stew on them for a little while. Then second thing we want to address is buffers. Uh, and two of the issues that we wanted to address on the buffers is creating some sort of criteria for berms, vegetated berms in lieu of buffers. Uh, and also for looking at some of the problems that arise with our buffer table. And the buffer table is essentially the comparison of what buffers are required for different uses. Uh, and why that probably needs to be cleaned up in the overall examination that we're doing on the zoning ordinance. Uh, and then obviously we'll leave it like we did the last time where we spend a, a, a good portion of the time getting feedback, particularly in this case with our planning board members who are here. Uh, but to start off, I'll start off with the, uh, how different approaches we've come up with to deal with the rent to bill, I'm sorry, build to rent communities that are beginning to pop up in, uh, in not just this region, throughout the southeast, throughout the country. Uh, problems that arise because of them. Uh, and if it's a case that the board wants to address it, uh, you know, with a, with an ordinance regulatorily, we could do so. Uh, so the struggle we run into is enforceability of this. Uh, and so, uh, uh, so the programs we've come up with is kind of two, uh, two different sides of a, of the spectrum here. Uh, the one, uh, the option one is really the more austere side. Um, uh, and this is the way that, um, I believe Glen County and, um, City of Savannah have addressed this. Um, it is a lot of administrative work. It definitely would require, uh, an additional staff member dedicated to it, but it's also enforceable, um, fairly easy, easily enforceable. And, uh, the reason is you're essentially deciding that, uh, and in this case, we limited it to R six. Uh, and, uh, the reason is because if you look at the different zoning categories, certain zoning categories, uh, we generally don't have a problem with a high percentage or a hundred percent of the units in a particular subdivision being, uh, being rental. Uh, you know, R three multi-family is an example of that. Uh, and R four, uh, mobile home park is another example of that. Uh, and even R two, which is duplexes, I don't know necessarily folks will necessarily have a problem with, uh, with a high percentage of rentals in there. It's the high density, single-family detached subdivisions where, um, uh, you run to prob- where you could potentially run into problems if you have a, uh, certain, you know, a certain high percentage of them as rental, particularly off-site managed rentals, um, owned by an absentee owner, a REIT, uh, or a hedge fund or something to that effect, you know, who, who they're managing out. And then you're mixing it in there with a smaller percentage of owner-occupied homes. Um, so, uh, option one is basically you take every, if you want to rent your house in an R, in you are, house is located in R six zone piece of property, uh, it has to be registered with the county. Similar to how you have to have a business license, your rental would have to have a registration with the county. Um, an annual fee would be assessed per unit. And the reason we're doing that is obviously so we can cover our costs to administer the program because it is going to, uh, it is going to require a staff member to, uh, to monitor it. Uh, and then what you can do at that point is, uh, since R six are divided into individual subdivisions, you can, uh, determine the percentage that, that the board thinks is a healthy mix of rentals, uh, in a, uh, in a particular subdivision. City of Savannah, in this case, they do it with short-term rentals. Um, they do it in their districts downtown. Uh, so let's say the, each of their district will say, like the Victorian district will have, uh, you, you can have up to twenty percent, um, of the units, uh, housing units there can be, uh, available for short-term rental on a first curve, a first come, first served basis. Uh, and so, uh, and then, uh, then you are essentially creating a waiting list after that point uh, to, for one of these rentals to become avail, uh, one of these slots to become available in your neighborhood.
This is even for individuals owning houses if it's an R six zoning?
Yeah, I don't know how you, um, uh, you know, kind of, uh, separate the two, um, since, uh, uh, you know, between a, between a corporation or an individual owning houses.
Yeah.
Um, it has necessarily the same effect on the neighborhood. Um, you know, a, a non-owner-occupied home. Uh, and the benefit of this, although it is.
Tim, this one, now option two is not just R six though, right? It's.
Option one, you mean?
Yeah, we're talking about option one though, right now.
I thought you were going to option two.
No, I'm on option one.
Okay, stop, John.
Um, so option one is, uh, uh, you know, you, you then can then send the staff around uh, to review the properties. They can respond to complaints in the neighborhoods because they'll know if it's a rental because it has to be registered.
Tim.
Yes, sir.
How about the city of Springfield? They doing a big one out here on, on, uh, twenty-one?
Yes, apartment complex.
They're having a, I heard they're doing this, yeah. It's all around them. They building it now.
Yeah, um.
I'm, I wonder what, you know, wonder.
Is it single-family detached or is it apartment complex? I'm, I'm not familiar with it. I.
There's a bunch of big houses in there. I haven't been up in there, but they say they all. Huh?
You, the one behind Wendy's?
Yes.
That's us. We're, we're building that. I, I just, if you have any questions, let me know.
Is that single-family rental?
It, it is, it is a project that, that we're evaluating for that, but it's just.
Okay.
A simple, single-family right now.
Okay, so, um, and so they don't have a, uh, not that I'm aware of. They don't have any sort of rental, uh, system either. Matter of fact, the struggle that we had trying to address this is it's so new uh, that most jurisdictions don't have, um, some sort of ordinance in place to address it, uh, the, the build to rent type community. So we're just kind of coming up with potential solutions and just seeing what may or may not work with you all. Uh, and so, but if it's in a, that's where, this is only for single-family detached. If it's in a, if it's, uh, multi-family townhouses, apartments, condominiums or anything like that, um, then, uh, these limitations wouldn't apply unless that's a desire, that's the direction the commission wanted to go. I mean, you could do it for any rental if you really wanted to. But that's kind of the more austere approach, uh, on this is when that you're registering uh, every rental property in R six. Uh, the, the next one, uh, is, is one that I, I think it's based off of Cherokee County. And to me, um, it, what it basically does is you take new residential neighborhoods, uh, R six neighborhoods, uh, and then you make it as a requirement, I'm guessing for rezoning uh, or for subdivision, uh, that they, uh, that the neighborhood, not the individual houses, register with the county. Uh, and that they register annually with the county, uh, for this, uh, for this purpose. And then you'd have the same type of agreement for the percentages in that neighborhood that could be, um, uh, that could be rental versus owner-occupied. Um, and then the HOA or the management company, uh, HOA, if it was probably a mix between owner-occupied and rentals, um, or management company, if it was a hundred percent, uh, rental community, um, they would then, uh, go to the, uh, they'd be responsible for registering on an annual basis. That's a little bit more of a struggle to, uh, to administer simply because, um, you're not keeping track of the individual homes. The individual homes that want to go out for rental are not registering with the county. Uh, and so you're not really knowing, you know, if somebody is, uh, is renting or not. You're leaving it up to the HOA or the management company to, to tell you those percentages. So it's a little bit, uh, more difficult to administer that, uh, but, um.
That's, that would be a tough one. So many HOAs are just functional.
Well, and that, and that's the third thing. So let's say they start, the developer comes in, uh, registers, uh, in the first year. Uh, and then the residents, you know, decide they don't want to fund the HOA anymore.
Right.
Um, you know, what recourse do you have, uh, then to say, well, you've got to do this for rental purposes? Uh, it becomes very difficult for staff again to administer the program. Um, uh, since you're dealing with neighborhoods versus, uh, individual units. Um, yes, sir.
Earlier you mentioned short-term rentals.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, generally, um, a short-term rental is like your Airbnb, uh, anything, um, it can range anything from less than, um, six months to less than one month. Uh, depends how the individual jurisdiction decides to define it. Uh, and, um, but it's, but, uh, they're, they're different animal. Uh, and I, and you could ease, and I bring that up only because that's what Savannah just chose to regulate. They're, they weren't, they weren't gonna reg, regulate the, um, long-term rentals, just the short-term.
So it wouldn't apply to any long-term rentals, just short-term rentals?
On, in Savannah. What we're talking about is long-term rentals. Um, uh, we're just using the same type of system that they're using in there for long-term rentals, uh, uh, that Savannah used for short-term.
Do we have any data on what percentage is good for rentals in any given neighborhood?
Um, for, we were, uh, w- w- looking around to some of the other jurisdictions i- i- using, and I don't know whether they base this arbitrary numbers or they have a, or they have some sort of study basis on it. Uh, we were looking at kind of the eighty-twenty, uh, rule, but, you know, certainly that, you know, that's really up to the, up to the board.
Does that mean twenty percent of your problems are gonna be?
Yeah, twenty percent of the homes are gonna be, uh, could be open up for rental.
Sorry to, sorry to interject, but, but is the problem a mix of, of homes when they're mixed together? Or is it, cause at one point you said it was just if they're mixed together in that one point. To clarify.
Um.
I understand the question.
That would be, that would probably be mine. I think it, um, my opinion, and I just visualize this young couple that have lived somewhere for five years. They own their home as they've invested in it and it's gotten a lot of rentals, you know, adjacent. Um, not what they were expecting. I, for me, I, I see a hybrid of something.
And, and that's kind of what we were gonna, almost a fourth option.
It's almost all or nothing.
Right.
The whole neighborhood's gonna be considered a rental or it's not. I don't really see, it's gonna be. And it doesn't, it doesn't mean, I don't, I don't see where it would mean that it couldn't mean that someone couldn't own a home in there fee simple, just as long as they were aware. Right. Of what it could be, you know?
Um, the, the third option, and there will be a fourth, which is more of a hybrid, a mix of this. Uh, but the third option really looks at our zoning, uh, text in general and then says, well, um, you know, anything that's R six on the books basically stays R six. But from this point on, we, we basically eliminate the R six zoning uh, and then begin to move everything more to a PD type text, uh, if you want high density. Um, and, uh, what it allows you to do is basically as part of those, and you can come up with some standard text for, um, uh, for PD zoning. Um, you know, for instance, um, uh, one of them is, uh, so in this way, we don't have to track it. Uh, and this is for new development only, is you can, uh, how it deals with resident, uh, rental, residential rental is you can say, um, you know, only a certain amount of those homes um, can be, uh, can be put out for rent, uh, in the, in the, uh, you know, one year after the CO is issued, right? And the, and the reason you do that is if you're trying to prevent, um, you know, this kind of, uh, if, a, a neighborhood where folks are making the assumption that they're moving into a neighborhood that's predominantly, um, single-family residential. And then at a latter point, uh, the developer says, I'm just gonna sell the, you know, remaining sixty homes to the REIT, um, uh, for, for rental. Um, it, it kind of defines that during the zoning process, um, versus, or, uh, it puts that kind of restrictions and rules in space, in place during the zoning process rather than, uh, you know, trying to deal with it, um, via regulation or registration later on. Um, and you can create those percentages and say, um, you know, to the developer uh, that, uh, certain percentage, you know, the same thing, uh, eighty percent or seventy percent, uh, of your initial sales have to be to owner-occupied. Uh, everything, um, you know, anything after that could be, uh, uh, could be non-owner-occupied rental units. Um, and when I say non-owner-occupied, I'm, you're really trying to restrict, you know, third-party rent, you know, uh, rentals if you're having a second home um, and there, it's not a full-time occupation. You know, I don't think anyone's trying to restrict, uh, concerned about restricting that or concerns that that actually would negatively affect, um, the quality of the neighborhood or home values. Um, then you could also, um, create, you can take this a little bit further um, and say, right now with the recent changes that you have, uh, that, that we submitted on the R six zoning, we have four and a half homes per acre and we have our green space ru- rules. Um, but, uh, you can say, you know, here's your, your kind of level one, uh, PD, uh, high-density text. Um, you meet all these qualifications that we currently have in place. Maybe add the, um, uh, you know, some sort of language with rental language in there. Uh, but if you're willing to, um, you know, up the standards a little bit, we'll give you bonus density. Uh, we'll say, you know, that if you're willing to, um, you know, look at things like, uh, a, you know, higher quality amenities, um, what do we have here? Um, uh, uh, material upgrades, you know, stuff that, you know, really, um, uh, you know, adds value to the neighborhood, we'll give you a bonus density to it. Uh, we're not gonna penalize you necessarily for not having it because right now we've got four and a half per acre and we're talking about going to six in acres. So it really is a, is a bonus. Um, uh, and, and the, and the builders can look at, uh, look at doing, uh, something like that. Uh, but that's if we eliminate the R six and go to more of a PD text. It gives us a little bit more flexibility, uh, in that language. We wouldn't really need anybody to, uh, administer these rentals at this point, um, uh, under this program, uh, you know, simply because, um, if you've got somebody, a REIT that wants to come in there, they're not gonna wait, they're not gonna sit on the house for a year, um, waiting for that restriction to expire before they start renting it out. They're gonna need to start renting it out right away. So it kind of eliminates that, that risk, um, that you're gonna get, uh, you know, a hundred percent rental, uh, community or, or ninety-five percent rental community and a five percent owner-occupied. The fourth option really is kind of a hybrid of this where you take option three and then mix it in with an option one. That's if you, if you think the existing stock of housing and R six housing uh, is, is creating a, uh, a problem for residents with regards to that kind of, uh, that rental owner-occupied mix, uh, you can actually do, um, uh, you can do, you know, the, everything new would, would call, fall into the PD zoning text. Uh, and then anything, um, that is pre-existing, you can create a, a rental registration type system. Um, but, um, you know, that's if, uh, you know, that's if the, you know, basically the maintenance issues with regards to rental units starts to begin, become a problem. Uh, that's, um, you know, I, uh, you know, generally, uh, owner-occupied is generally gonna take better maintenance care of the property, uh, next, you know, than, than a renter would, um, since they have equity in it. Uh, and so that is a, you know, that's a concern that you want to look at, uh, that you may want to look at. Um, but I know this issue came up. It, uh, um, was a concern enough to have a, uh, moratorium on, uh, high-density rezoning. Uh, and so these are some options that we wanted to throw out there. Uh, and it could be a mix of this, uh, or it could be none of these. Uh, but, uh, we wanted at least to give you something to, to think about.
And, and this rental-type development is really with just the R six density and greater density? It's not?
Well, I, I didn't hear. Well, I, I didn't hear.
R-six density is where you have the rental, it's not with R-one, three houses per acre?
Yeah, and I, and, and, and that, and that's another interesting point, you know, R, R-one is, you know, basically twelve thousand square-foot lot minimums, um, you know, our view is that, that's, you know, because of the, the size of the home sites, that you're probably not going to get, uh, a lot of these build-to-rent, uh, communities, uh, zoning in an R-one.
We may not now, but I, I think we wouldn't now, but if the industry changed, we could see some of that, I, I don't think it would be a big deal to loop that in with what we're doing already.
We could, and, and, you know, I just, I just didn't want to make, uh, I, I didn't know how, how deep you wanted to go on this, I mean, so, if, you, we didn't include R-three in this, just for the purpose that, you know, as a general rule, you know, hot, uh, multifamily, um, people are, have a hi- there's a higher degree of expectation that there's going to be.
Yeah, I wouldn't include R-three.
High percentage of rentals.
Any multifamily, I wouldn't include, in fact, if you did something like option three, and you had, uh, development that included multifamily, had a mix, you'd have to exclude that in that, that ordinance, so that, you know, you could rent out the multifamily, I would think. Is there a size house that has to be built on R-six or R-three, is there a minimum square foot?
No.
See, one of my, I think the concern we're having is with the rental, is that the developer would come in and try to make a smaller house, less quality materials, to make it rental beneficial, you know, and if you don't have the quality into it, then you may not have the care of the place, I mean, I think that's the issue I'm hearing was being concerned about, one of the issues.
Well, and you could potentially put that in there, uh, you know, as, you know, under the PD bonus program, you know, for the higher density, if you do, let's say, larger, um, square footage, I don't know if it's been done before, um, but.
I don't know if you legally can, I just think if you had a certain-sized house with certain type of materials, um, it's either going to be a high-end rental property, which would be okay, or it's going to be a strong, um, single-family dwelling unit to be sold, and it's going to be taken care of.
And, and one thing to consider, there's nothing stopping any developer from having, um, uh, single-family, not, uh, de- or detached homes, uh, in an R-three, right, we do that already, um, we, we have that, Jasper Village is an example of that, so if they know this is going to be, uh, a rental community from the get-go, um, you know, just because they're detached homes does not mean they have to, they have to be in the R-six zoning, they could start off probably where they should be, in the R-three zoning, uh, so that, um, you know, that it's by right, uh, allowed, uh, you're allowed to have rentals without, you know, the, the restrictions on it. Yeah.
So, I guess I've been trying to wrap my head real, a little bit around all, but I, I do understand the concern over rental, but I also do understand, uh, the benefits of rental, uh, you have the question about Savannah, and why is it just, and I can't speak for Savannah, but I do think, forget it, I must be, I must be into metallic, or like a magnet or something, you know, I think the concept of rental is much more comfortable there, uh, one of the most, uh, you know, in-demand neighborhoods is Zarsley Park, and I would say the majority of those have a rental unit with the main unit, um, yeah, I am concerned about affordability of housing, and I think, you know, we, we got to develop a plan in the county that allows for rental, um, you know, I'm not, that's not even on the table right now, but I think some way to allow for somebody to be able to live in the property, but also have a rental piece on the property, if the piece of property's large enough, we should be having that accommodation, because that could help somebody pay a home mortgage and solve some of this rental need, because, like or not, there's a demand for rental, people are going to figure out how to have the rental, so we've got to figure out a solution for it, um, you know, I do think density is also a factor, um, you know, quality, and I do agree with, we want quality by, by all means, um, there's, there's a need for a certain number of units to typically, especially for like a multifamily, I'd say multifamily, our density is fairly low relative to most, uh, communities' multifamily standards, I don't think without a lot of wetlands, you'd probably be able to do a typical kind of apartment-style, uh, multifamily underneath our current zoning density, which probably means that, that don't, um, have enough units to justify some of the amenities and clubhouse spaces and stuff of that nature, so I'm just asked that we think about that as we move forward, whatever option it is. You know, on the, the limitation of just how to go about it, um, you know, the, I, like I say, I can completely understand a third phase or second phase, getting bought up, and that changes the character of the neighborhood, so I, I, I absolutely agree with the discussion, I just think that we really need to think through, and I know we are thinking through, but how can we provide for an option, and maybe even other options to provide rental, um, because it's desperately needed, I'll tell you, I moved in the county, or I moved into the county fifteen years ago, I didn't move into the county twenty years ago, because I was needing to rent when I moved here, and I couldn't find anything that I was willing to rent, so I rented, um, in Chatham, so just, we've, we've got to keep that in mind, because that is a, a style, you know, that people desire, so, um, you know, I know, I know folks that, um, are very much needing that and looking to that, um, you know, even my, my parents' age, right, if they were to want to rent, they, they wouldn't want to go to a multifamily, they would want to go to, or, excuse me, what, apartment-style, they would want to go to this kind of, more of a single-family, so I think Tim pointed out, we could still do the, I know, I forget what it's called, but the, the one that's there on the county line, you could do that underneath the R-three or something like that, as long as you weren't planning, see, fee simple lots, so, I know that was a bit of rambling, I just, I, I do, I just wanted to. The, the improvements, bonus densities, things of that nature, that we can build in, so people understand that it, it is welcome, we just want to know it upfront, and have as much understanding of what their plans are, I, I think whatever option we get to, that's the most important, that we can hopefully then educate those future buyers, just that they know what they're, they're buying into, um, but it is a bit of buyer beware, they're going to have to educate themselves on what the neighborhood they're buying into allows.
Yeah, you make a good point, I really thought about as much when I came up, we, that's what we did, we bought a house, and we stayed where we were for many, many years, but in this society now, there's a lot of transit, um, couples are moving into communities, then the next promotion comes, and it's in Atlanta, or Charlotte, or, and so they're not looking to buy as often, they're looking to rent a nice house, I think that's the key, is making sure that we don't just have a lot of affordable housing, but we have some nice housing that they're renting as well, and I want to be careful, we don't just get a whole four or five hundred home neighborhood, that's twelve hundred square-foot homes, which is not, that, that's my first house, you know, but materials weren't that great, and there's no, there's no amenities set up, so it's just, it's, it has the potential to be a blithe in the future, I think.
It does, I think there's many examples of fee simple, you know, the, or the similar scenario, I, my, my thoughts too, I had a note here, I meant to mention, you know, a large enough rental that has a management behind it, I think, would tend to be maintained a bit better, um, because there's one company responsible for it, than often, you know, five in this neighborhood, you know, that, there is a standard there that can be applied, now granted, it's not, the, the county can't really enforce it, and I understand that's the concern, that you want something that, that we have some teeth to it, to be able to, to, to regulate, and if something's not going right, to be able to, to change that, but, um, yeah, I, I know it's a very challenging thing, and like Tim said, I mean, the, there's not many communities that have figured out how to address it, a lot of communities haven't figured out how to allow for the, the, what looks like single-family, but it's all in one piece of property, so I, I apologize to county for at least allowing that, because that's not allowed in a lot of places, so, um, it is a, it is a, a need, and I think it'll be a more common thing, so.
There was a hand raised in the back, you have a comment or a question?
Uh, I've got a co- I've got a couple of comments.
Okay.
Listening to the discussion, I think staff has done a very good job in trying to evaluate what, what some of the options are, I, I do want to make the distinction between what the city of Savannah has done and what Glen County have done, and that has created short-term vacation rental ordinances, where generally, these are properties that are rented for vacation, for short-term, generally, they're rented for three days, five days, maybe a maximum of seven, when you get beyond thirty days, then that is no longer a short-term vacation rental, much like if you go into a hotel and check into a hotel room, and keep it for thirty days, you no longer play a hotel motel tax on that, because it's viewed to be more permanent residential, I think that there is a problem, uh, with creating a rental registry that is not focused exclusively on short-term vacation rentals, I know that there was legislation that was attempted to be passed many years ago, uh, at the General Assembly, that basically would have created, uh, rental registries, and that was voted down, now, I'm not sure where that statute stands, and I will do some research to get that information to you, but I think you're almost at the brink of opening Pandora's box, when you start talking about policing, uh, as this county manager has, uh, expressed, this is a somewhat of an administrative problem.
Chris, that's ringing, can you talk it down a bit?
Somewhat of an administrative problem, when you're having to police what people are doing with their own private property, uh, so that's an observation there, the, the other.
Individuals though, right?
Yes.
Not, for an individual, I mean, if I had a piece of property I wanted to rent, that's one thing, well, I, we're trying to, it's these total developments that's.
And that, and that was going to be my next point, I'm sorry, the, I think the focus of this, when it started, was built, built-to-rent subdivisions, not necessarily a pre-existing subdivision, where you may have ten or twenty existing property owners at, in one section of the subdivision, that decide that they want to rent their properties, or if you have somebody that comes in and decides to buy up a number of those, and we've seen that in the city of Savannah with these short-term vacation rentals, where there are more as, as.
I think we're still looking at what you're saying, is the new developments, we're not looking at so much policing, something happening already in lost plantations.
Yes, so that would be my caution, I, I, I think if you focus on the, a built-to-rent subdivision.
That's what we're looking at, yeah.
That is under common ownership, with some bells and whistles, to ensure that it has the quality that you want, the maintenance is provided in the manner that you want, under a co- common ownership and a management company, uh, to handle that, I think that will get back on focus.
We, we, I won't say we're not looking at the same time broader, that's why they're having a workshop.
Sure.
Do we need something out there for rental properties everywhere, I mean, it's, it's a type of business, the, the fee would be very small, but it would allow, uh, a way to police that a little bit, to make sure that a neighborhood does not get run down, because someone's moved away, and they're renting their house, the glass is broke, the paint's peeling, the roof is gone, the grass is up to here, um, is there a way we could, as we're looking at the rent to build as our main focus, at least consider the other options, I think that's what we're doing.
Sure, and I will look into that, and get, get, get a, a solid feeling on what you actually can do in terms of establishing truly a rental property registry, and I'll get that, that back to you by the end of the week.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Anything for the record?
Mike Vacor, I'm sorry.
And I would say, um, like Glen County, short-term vacation rental, and, and Effingham, they're different, I mean, they're just.
I don't think.
You know, because you have waterfront, beachfront, beach, you know, stop property, we don't, you know.
We don't have that.
Yeah, or.
But both down, we can't not allow, we just got to figure out how to control.
I'm not for over-regulating, and I hope I haven't come across that way, I'm just, just trying to figure it out.
One of the ways Tim's recommended here is that you, it's probably going to happen more with the density, so if you give some additional density, if you do a PD, and you put the one-year moratorium on being under rent, that particular development, that may move people more toward development for resale, because they can't rent them off the bat, and they get six houses versus maybe the four and a half, so maybe they do the better quality, or more amenities, whatever it is.
I, I like the, the going with the PD.
I do too.
Versus the R-six, allowing the R-six, but it's in a PD, and then, you know, there are some, I guess, options within of, of depending on the direction that, you know, the development wants to go.
I do too, but I'd bring the other, R-one, anything else with any decent amount of density, I would bring in the same option, so we could capture some of that, and really be good, good opportunity to do better green space, better ideas, better building, better neighborhoods, you know, by bringing things like that into a PD, I would think, which is really our overall goal, just want.
Yeah.
Make sure what we build is, is going to represent Effingham County, I've witnessed firsthand what happens when you have an ownership community go rental, um, and it's very unfortunate, because during the time period where we had the big downturn in, in oh-eight, and, and above, uh, it was a townhome community that was supposed to be for sale only, that, uh, went the other way, no sales occurred, the only thing to do was rent, unfortunately, a few elderly people bought in there, because this was the product they were looking for, and, uh, rules and regulations were put in place, but when you started the rental procedure, they didn't follow, you know, we had dog ordinances, and no large aggressive breeds, and no debris in the yard, and, and we, there's HOA and everything else in there, and we, you know, that's all controlled, but, you know, bicycles are left in the front yard, and trash, and the, you know, that kind of thing happens, and then those, these home, homeowners are stuck with it, and that's what we're trying to, to. Trying to help out with a little bit. Prevent, you know, that somebody doesn't get in the situation, it might be a, a senior citizen on a limited income that needs that kind of product, and wants to own something, and then, and they're around neighbors that just don't care about their property, or that new couple that moved into their dream home, and their first home, and everything's great for a couple of years, and all of a sudden goes the other way, and, you know, that, that happens to be a smaller product, maybe a fourteen-hundred square-foot house, and I think the twelve-hundred square-foot house is just about a thing of the past, but, uh, but, you know, and some of these older neighborhoods could be a target too, by the way, but, uh, I've, I've seen it deteriorate, and it, it's hard to control, even if you got management in place, doing everything right, you just can't get people to do stuff, like pick up after their dog, and it, it really can become a mess, and then a hindrance for somebody trying to just live their lives. Those are the challenges, um, we probably got more discussion we need on this, but we've only got fifteen more minutes, do we not need to move to the buffers, what we got our?
Yeah, we can move to the buffers, but I, I just wanted to get.
We have to come back to this discussion maybe a little later.
Um, so, moving on to the buffers, uh, there were, um, I'll do the quick thing first, uh, within your pack, within the papers that you have, is the existing, um, buffer table, and, uh, that's in our, uh, that's in our ordinance, um, and, uh, the buffers are, and I, this is, uh, this is simply a way of, we've got to make this, uh, table a little, it's got some conflicts in it that we've got to eliminate, um, so, uh, according to the ordinance under buffer standards, they're based on, uh, the, uh, the use of the adjacent property, uh, and so, if you've got a commercial, uh, or institutional, like a school, uh, use, uh, and, uh, going up against a residential use, it's thirty feet, uh, and so, uh, the problem is, uh, that we then mix the language in it from use to zoning district, uh, which is not the same thing, uh, and you'll see that we have AR-one or AR-two property, uh, as one of the uses, that's not a use, uh, that's a district, uh, you can have a commercial use in an AR property, you can have a non-conforming use in an AR property, uh, so, um, uh, and so, uh, what we're, one of the things that we're going to request on this, uh, when we, uh, with the, uh, with the consultant, uh, is that we come to a unified choice of either, we're going to base the buffers a hundred percent on uses, um, so we will get rid of the AR-one, AR-two, R-district language, and just simply say residential, single-family residential, multifamily, agricultural, um, commercial, so on and so forth, those are uses, or we simply make them all based on zoning, the current zoning of a property, compared to the current zoning of the adjacent property, so.
That'd be simpler, wouldn't it?
What'd you say?
Wouldn't that be a lot simpler?
That is, that is the simplest way of doing it, and it's the simplest way for, uh, for folks to view it, um, because in some cases, properties are zoned, uh, and, um, and there's, and they're, they're vacant, uh, so now, you, what's dictating what you can do with your property is what the guy did next door.
Zoning-wise, zoning-wise.
Development-wise, um, and so if you're a B-three property, and you want to use it for red. And so if you're a B three property and you want to use it for residential purposes, which you're allowed to, and the property next door is industrial, industrially, you know, it, it creates all these things that, you know, that are problematic. So, so, but if he simply said, this property is zoned this, this property is zoned this, therefore that is what your buffer is, that might be the simplest way to go about it.
I think the uses might be a little more complicated to dictate what I can do based on what you did on your B three, not based on the zoning, it gets confusing.
Well, well, with that train of thought is who comes first?
Yeah.
Who comes first? And I submit to you that it's not the, the distance of the buffer, it's the quality of the buffer that you propose.
Absolutely.
And you might choose to put up a twenty foot sound wall and have a thirty foot buffer between industrial and residential. And the residents are much more protected than, and I've asked people, go, go to South Bridge along I ninety five where that twenty five foot berm is, stand in the backyard and talk and you don't even know I ninety five there. Go to my plant at five o'clock in the morning and go to Jamestown and it's a half a mile of woods and you can hear people talking. So it's the quality of the buffer is what I think we need to be worried about, not stuck on how many feet it is. It's the quality, it's the quality of what you're giving people.
And, and which, we could either transition into the next item which addresses that or you can, if there's any further questions on the, on the table.
Any questions on the table?
Yeah.
It seems to me that like there should start being X's somewhere because we're not saying that the, the less intense use has to buffer to the more intense use, right?
No.
Right, but when it says proposed R district to a light industrial district, it says three hundred feet, right? It should have an X there. Most ordinance, you know, it's saying that it'd be like a, like a matrix across the way because only the proposed buffer would have, the proposed use would have the, the buffer applied to it, right? So I've actually marked it up, the idea on that, because that would just clarify that, right? So it's the, the proposed use is the one and, and the less intense use, you're not having to buffer the three hundred, you're not having to provide three hundred foot of buffer. I know that's not the way we've, we've interpreted in the past, I just thought if we're cleaning it up, it'd be a good time to clean that part up. So it's not interpreted differently in the future. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And to Mr. Zipper's point is one of the things that, that have come up is the use of berms as a way to increase the quality of, of the buffer. But we do not incentivize in any way developers from using a berm versus a straight out buffer distance. And so I know recently in the past, we've had some developments that we've chosen to rezone simply because they were willing to spend the extra funds on a, on a vegetated bu- vegetated berm and, and thus shrink the required buffer, but the end product is better. Because what you're trying to do is basically protect the, the less intensive use property from the, from the recently rezoned property. And so one way to, one way to do this is to, rather than do it on a variance basis, which is how we've traditionally done it, is to potentially come up with a formula on this. And what we were thinking of is that if, if you've got a three hundred foot buffer requirement and you wanted to, you wanted the ability to limit that to a hundred and fifty feet, then you can go up to twenty five foot buffer. And the reason why it's twenty five foot buffer is because it's a three to one on each side of that, I'm sorry, C P A buffer, three to one on each side of that berm. And so therefore it's seventy five feet on one side, seventy five feet on the other. So the base footprint of that berm is a hundred and fifty feet in order to get that twenty five foot height. And that is a vegetated buffer, so there would have to be plantings on top of it. And, and if you did not want to go that high and you were, and you could go out have an, have some undisturbed buffer and then a berm. I think the formula we worked out is for every for every foot of buff, of berm height, there, you could reduce six feet of buffer of undisturbed buffer length with a minimum, you know, of, let's say, a, a maximum of a twenty five foot buffer, minimum of, let's say, a ten foot buffer or something to that effect.
That could be worthwhile.
Like he's saying buffer, I mean berm. Twenty five foot berm, a minimum of a ten foot berm.
I like that. And the reason being that Mr. Zipper is right, I think, from the research I've done and what I've seen. Vegetation is one thing, but it doesn't do a whole lot for noise. You, you could, you could shield that visually, but without some kind of berm or a sound wall, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, it doesn't, the sound still travels and it still bounces through there and it still gets through. I mean, we've seen it happen. I've had complaints through literally a mile of dump trucks from the development off McCall in a neighborhood a mile away. Man, I can hear the dump trucks just banging and doing this and that and yep. And that's a long way away with a lot of vegetation. So, I mean, we can see that in real time.
I wonder if in addition to considering the berm, do we need to look at, if you do a wall, what kind of wall could that even with wall with vegetation? Might be some other options we need to look at there if we're going to consider that, I don't know that.
There's decorative concrete walls, you know, that's twenty, twenty five feet high that the, the footprint could be less than fifty foot. And you, and you could use the, a lot more of the land, a lot more usable land and accomplish the same goal. Maybe you're going to better go it. But it, I wouldn't rule that out. I mean, there's things that I don't think you need to make a rash decision on it. I think you need to study what's out there and.
Yeah, I'd like to know more about the walls too. What, what kind of material and how high and what does it do to sound compared to berms and costs? Be good to know, it might be something included.
There's sound deadening wall, I mean, you go up to these bigger cities, I mean, you'll see the wall, but you, there's, you see rooftops right over. So I mean, it must.
It can be cross prohibitive, I'm sure.
Well, it could be.
Yeah.
Say a word or two, just about the buffer in general. And I, I think the, I, I don't know the original history of the three hundred foot deep industrial to ag and residential buffer standard, but, and not saying we want to compare ourselves to peer counties, but that's significantly larger than any of our peer counties have. And what, why, why I bring that up mostly is because there's a certain amount of demand, kind of like I said on rental. I think there's a certain amount of demand that, that there will be from an industrial square footage standpoint. And every hundred and forty five feet of that three hundred foot buffer is an acre of property that's getting used for buffer, right? So I just, if we can maybe look at what is the intent, what are we really trying to achieve? Is it sound? Is the sound more important than the aesthetics? I personally, as I drive a road, I would like to see the, the, the natural vegetation a bit on the edge of the road. And this isn't industrial specific, this is the neighborhood that's backing up to it. This is probably the least of my concern would be a commercial area because that's their business. They need to have frontage, they need to have visibility. But in the roadway protection, I know we're talking about industrial berms or industrials on it, but just as we're visiting this ordinance more, I know we've got some language in there about that. But, you know, just in general, what's seen from any of our roads in the county, I think with some, some either natural preservation or a, a good replant buffer that's not overly excessive would, would go a long way with those concerns. And then on that, that aspect of the berm, if it's one of those, the massive berms like that that's twenty five feet tall, you know, I think it's important to define what revegetation is. And, and I personally don't think it should have to be a whole lot of plant material because if you allow it to go and make another nature to take over, that is the I sixteen, the I ninety five berm that you're talking, we were talking about it, that was there in some, uh, South Bridge, I think, is what we're all trying to reference in there. That berm, yeah, it went away because the, over time, now granted, it took some time to grow in, but you don't even realize the berm's there anymore. So it almost feels like a really thick area of woods.
Ramsey landing, if you ride by there, it's got, had the volunteer pines come up on the berm along one nineteen.
They're going, it's, you can, you can replant, replant it with all the beautiful landscape plant material you want. If it doesn't get maintained, it's going to turn back into pines anyway.
That's right.
All right, we're coming up on five o'clock. We can continue some discussion during the commission time from what we've.
Yeah, I just want to say on this real fast. I'm glad we're doing this. I don't know where the three hundred foot come from, but I don't like the variance method, you know, us doing the variances because it, it looks arbitrary and I'm glad we're looking at it, actually changing it.
Yeah, I think residents need to know y'all protecting, I mean, it just makes it feel like something's happening. It's still a, a great buffer that's typically approved in the variance process.
That's right.
And it's just, seems to be different than that.
Yeah.
All righty, very good. Well, we probably need to take a quick five minute recess to use the restroom if you need to, for the, come back to our regular meeting. Appreciate the planning board being here tonight and participating in this. Thank you guys so much for your input.
We need more of this, for sure.
Yep. So we're going to journey, journey, come back to our regular board meeting in just about five minutes.